Buster, your chop. You'll have to do it now.
No, actually, Brian, I'd like to know right now.
You got it. The mayor as the director.
No, no, I know.
We might have to pause the meeting until Brian gets to the bottom of it.
We might have to pause the meeting just to talk about all this.
All right. Okay, good evening. Welcome to the April 20th, 2023 Planning Commission Regular Meeting. I would like to start by having a clerk call the order, please.
Chair McGee is absent. Vice Chair Hauser.
Here.
Mayor Stuart Bixen.
Here.
Secretary Sage.
Here.
Gasson.
Here.
Kenjuk.
Here.
King is absent. Lord is absent. And Stone.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's move on to item agenda number three, Public Comment. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment on an item that is not on the agenda this evening? Hearing no voices, we will move on to, we will close the public comment and move on to number four, which is the approval of the minutes, consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of April 3rd, 2023. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Support.
Okay, support by Commissioner Sage. Roll call, please.
Hauser?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Bixen?
Yes.
Gasson?
Yes.
Kenjuk?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number five, Public Hearings. Letter A, this is the discussion of the ordinance changes pursuant to the master plan Downtown Core, Downtown Edges One and Edge Two districts. Okay, Mr. Banda?
Thank you. Vidya is online there. Hi, Vidya.
Yes, good evening.
We think we have all our technical difficulties figured out on both ends here, so Vidya's gonna take over the screen, et cetera. So, thank you all for showing up. We're gonna continue to commit our second meetings of the month to keeping this master plan evaluation in line and keep it going.
There's Sarah and Sarah's here too. Great.
Thanks, Sarah. So, at the last meeting, we discussed what the chairman just outlined, Core, Downtown Edge One and Two. Didn't get any comments from anybody, and that's not necessarily bad. I think we had a pretty robust discussion last time, and as always, if there's anything you want to address, certainly during the public hearing or in between the monthly meetings, you let us know, and we'll get with Vidya and do it. So, tonight is the public hearing for those. Vidya, if you wanna outline them real quickly, so anybody watching on TV can know what we're doing tonight, and then after this action, possibly then we would go on to the next districts for a month, and then keep this rhythm going every month. That's our goal. So, I made that commitment, and we're gonna stick to it. Vidya?
Yes, thank you, Nick. Thank you, members of the commission. At your last month's Planning Commission meeting, when we introduced the master plan districts, we tackled the first three districts. The Central Business District, which is our core downtown on either sides of Main Street, and we did the Downtown Edge One and the Downtown Edge Two districts. I'll pull up a current map that is in place and that we are working on to update as and when we go through these districts. Give me one second, and I will stop this share, and I will pull up the new zoning map that we are working on, so you can actually see which area I'm referring to. So, when we talk about the core downtown, I am referring to this area that you see in light pink. This light pink central area is our core downtown. In the language in the CBD district continues to remain in line with what we have in our current zoning ordinance and what is written in the latest updated copy of the master plan. The only significant change in the CBD district is a clause that was added based upon the master plan about the possibility of adding a third story on some buildings, subject to special exception approval by the Planning Commission. So, those will be done only in very specific cases where an applicant can demonstrate that the proposed architecture and the proposed third story actually fits in in the setting in which it has been located. Otherwise, the integrity of the Central Business District is being maintained as is. The other two districts that you tackle were Downtown Edge One, which is on one side of Main Street, and Downtown Edge Two, which is on the other side of Main Street. Basically, these two districts are just an overflow of the businesses we have in the Central Business Districts. They are slightly secondary. We do have restaurants, mixed uses, and offices, all such uses within these two corridors. The reason why they are divided into Downtown Edge One and Two is because the topography is different on either sides of Main Street. So, Downtown Edge Two has got a different topography compared to Downtown Edge One, so we are taking advantage of the slope and the lay of the land in order to design the required setbacks for the districts, so on and so forth. Otherwise, Downtown Edge One and Two are also a cohesive part of the core downtown itself. These three districts were discussed in exhaustive detail and are very much in line with what was there in Mecklenburg's 2014 master plan that was done for you. So, the Planning Commission and the City Council had vetted these three districts thoroughly, so it's before you tonight for a public hearing. I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you might have on these districts.
Thank you, Vidya. Okay, Mr. Banda, so to the extent that there's public comment, should we open it up for? Okay, so at this time, it is 7:07. I would like to open the floor for open comment, consistent with what Vidya had said, and any comments or issues with what we had just discussed.
Is there anybody on the waiting list?
There's nobody on Zoom, Nick.
Oh, okay, yes, you're gonna control. Okay. Okay, commissioners, any questions? Well, actually, I should close the public comment first. Okay, so at, having no one approached the lectern, I will close the public comment at 7:08 PM. Discussion by the commissioners. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to pass the master plan Downtown Core, Downtown Edge One, and Edge Two districts, as discussed in the last meeting by Vidya.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
I'm sorry, was it Mr. Gasson? Okay, support by Mr. Gasson. Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. I apologize for that. Is there any discussion?
Well, I guess I.
Of course, Mr. Kenjuk.
I have a question here, and I don't know if this is appropriate for this forum or not, so if it's not, I apologize. But as I read through this and reviewed this document, to me, it struck me that some of the permitted uses were written into this plan because these businesses existed 10, 15, 20 years or more ago, and they made it through the planning process and whatnot, but I'm wondering if we should continue on with them, or do we take this time and make some changes?
Which ones?
Well, a couple, for example, would be, it talks about, you know, item number nine, that we can have plumbers, electricians, and other trades so long as their floor does not, you know, is not more than 50% of what they call manufacturing. I guess my question is, do we even want any manufacturing facilities in the Downtown Edge?
I.
Vidya, go ahead.
Mr. Kenjuk?
Absolutely.
Yes. The reason this is called manufacturing is it is not intended to replicate what we have in our research technology or our industrial districts, just like we had warehousing allowed in this. That's because the way our ordinance has got definitions, even if a restaurant has got a rear larger storage room where they stack all their supplies, if it's set up in a way that is a larger storage than just a closet where they store their linens, it's technically classified by the ordinance as warehouse, because they have their large-scale supplies in there. So, the goal was by not removing any of the existing uses, we are trying to make sure that we are not making any existing use that is non-conforming. We could possibly do a fine combing through it and take out some of the uses that might not be relevant, but for that, you'll have to do a very deep dive into every single business that is there in downtown. When was it established, and whether such a change would make them non-conforming? So, typically, we wouldn't do that unless the use is such that we think it negates the whole goal of what our downtown is.
I concur 100%. A lot of times, and actually, there's an advantage, for instance, I can give you Greens as an example. When they had upstairs, it was warehousing for their operation. You couldn't go up there to buy anything, so when they had a parking calculation, it was at 1,000 to 1,500 versus 1,200. So, that kinda, it helps that product. So, again, if a restaurant has incidental storage in their back, that's probably a bit of a restaurant, but if they're stockpiling half the billion not using it, then it gives them that ability, so it's still called that. But I agree, you could do exactly what you said, go through every single use in every single building and say, "I don't really want this anymore." I haven't seen that done before. It's, this is kind of a catch-all, and if there is something so negative that we didn't want those anymore, then I think that's when we do. And certainly, if we identify those in any of these districts, we could call them out.
Okay, well, it's not my intent to slow the process down. It seems like, you know, that would delay things for several weeks. A procedural kind of question on the same matter. If I understood Vidya right, we can't adjust something that could potentially make existing uses non-compliant without doing a detailed evaluation of everything in the district?
Exactly. So, the challenge, Mr. Gasson, is if we happen to remove a certain use without making absolutely sure that there is no such use in the district we are looking at, and we make them non-conforming, they would get classified as illegal, non-conforming use, which takes away a lot of their land use rights with regard to rebuilding after a fire that might destroy more than 50%, with regard to refinancing the business. It puts a lot of burden on a business owner once they're classified as a non-conforming use. So, we try to avoid doing that unless we are absolutely certain we are not going to create such a situation.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, to further emphasize that point, so recently, this really happened. So, on South Street in the Industrial District, a gentleman owned that home that burnt in a fire. Been in the family for 110 years. I've been doing planning a long time, and Randy's been at it a long time, and we, he came in and said, "I wanna rebuild my home." So, we thought it was a legal, non-conforming use, because the home was there, but in the Industrial District, just the opposite. It didn't say you could have residential, even under special exception, no how, no way. So, we sat down with Vidya, with Attorney Crotte, to see, okay, if he just built on the same footprint exactly, why couldn't he do it? Our ordinance says if 51% of the value of the property is destroyed, it automatically is non-conforming, and you can't put it back in. And that, it makes sense, because if you're truly living up to, "I don't want non-conformities to stay in the, in your districts," then the only way to get rid of them is if they're gone permanently, they're gone. And unlike what we did with the first-floor office, remember we talked about, as long as they kept that tenant, an office tenant, and didn't abandon the use for a year, but God forbid there was a fire and the office was gone, that's a different story. So, it's this goofy planning stuff, so it works both ways. Either you're in or you're out and non-conforming. You can't expand them, and you certainly don't wanna encourage them if you truly believe they're non-conforming uses, so, I don't know if that helps or not.
Yeah, thank you very much. Both of you for the explanation.
Richard, do you have any more questions?
No.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Ms. King, Dr. Earl, okay. All right, so with that, we had a motion and support, so I guess roll call then, please, Brian.
Hauser?
Yes.
Bixen?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Gasson?
Yes.
Kenjuk?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
And Stone?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, so Vidya, we're gonna try to keep moving these on the City Council, right? In a pretty timely fashion. We're not in a rush, but we're gonna not wait to get all of them at once to council. We'll probably bleed these to the council over a period of months. Would you agree with that?
Yes, I believe we should take it to council. It wouldn't be fair to burden council with a slew of more than three districts in one go. So, I think we should take it in a regular basis so that it moves through without just piling everything onto the council at one time.
Mr. Mayor, is that working?
Yeah, I think that was the plan, wasn't it?
It was.
So, when, do we have to have a public hearing?
We'll have another public hearing there.
Okay, so that'd be?
Double process.
30 days in?
So, we'll come and ask to set a public hearing. We have to do this again.
Oh, right, right, right.
So, it's gonna take a while to grind through it, but we'll do a, ask to set a public hearing, not this Monday, because we have a horrific agenda, but the next meeting, first meeting in May, or the second meeting in May, because that one's pretty tough, too, with the budget. But we'll schedule the public hearings for the next meeting. Probably, you know, it's just setting the public hearing, so we'll keep them moving in a timely fashion. It's gonna take two meetings at council also. So, it'll be thoroughly vetted for the community. Everybody will have a lot of time to see these and make comments on it, so.
Hey, great. Okay, thank you, sir. All right, moving on. Item number six, Considerations. Letter A, Discussion of the Ordinance Changes Pursuant to the Master Plan Period, Mixed Use and Transition Districts. Mr. Banda?
Vidya, I think you were gonna pull those up, and we're gonna go on to our next two districts.
Okay.
I'm just showing the map, and it's, and we'll continue the process.
Next, three districts. We are doing transition, mixed use, one, and mixed use.
Oh, got it, okay.
So, oh, hang on. I was, sorry, I was planning to share the transition district first. Let me find the transition district. I think it was this one. This one.
It would be Article 11D, right?
Okay, I got this, this one. Okay, so, transition district is the purple, purple one that you see over here. The transition district was designed initially, this area was also classified as Downtown Edge One, but when an analysis was done of what are the uses that are on the west side of Pine Street, there are lots of single-family homes also on this area. So, the same use profile that was offered for Downtown Edge One was deemed as not suitable for these two blocks. Hence, a new district was carved out to create it as transition. I do want to clarify for the benefit of the Planning Commission that if you look at your latest master plan, you might get a little confused saying, "I don't see a transition district in the latest master plan." The way the transition district is called out in the latest version of the master plan is they call out something called a downtown interface. Interface is a large nebulous area. It basically includes your Downtown Edge One, Downtown Edge Two, and transition. All these three districts form your downtown interface area in your master plan. So, if in case somebody asks you, "Where is this transition district in our latest master plan?" It is in fact part of your downtown interface district. So, if you look at the text of this district that is presented before you tonight, it is uses that we believe are a gradual transition from more heavier commercial uses to single-family residential uses on the west side of Pine Street. So, this provides for a gradual transition, and also the details for site development for this district are intended to safeguard these homes in terms of what kind of setbacks they should have, what kind of screening, other site design elements are built into it in order to protect the single-family homes to the west. So, that essentially is what the transition district is about. The other district that we are discussing tonight is, let me stop the transition. Would you like to discuss the transition before I talk about the mixed use?
Commissioners, is there any need to discuss the transition issue?
I do have one question.
Okay, Mr. Stone?
Vidya, good evening. Item four, Building Type Four, permitted use. What exactly is a notions, last sentence before or hardware? Is a notions like a 7-Eleven or a party store?
Was that in the mixed use?
Oh, notions.
Give me one second, please. Let me just, actually, it's.
He's looking at the transition.
Oh, sorry, I meant the mixed use. Sorry, I skipped ahead. My ADD.
I'm scrolling over here trying to.
It's exciting, but just hang on. Hold on, we'll get there, I promise, yes.
A second, see that?
So, we, we are looking at, which district are we looking at? Mixed use?
Okay. Everybody else is.
I'm sorry, commissioners, which district are we talking about at this time?
We were talking about the transition. I guess there's, are there any questions from the commissioners on the transition area? Looks like there's none. Okay, so, Mr. Banda will continue with the.
We can go to, yeah, mixed use.
Mixed use.
Next is the mixed use district. So, for the mixed use district, I will, I'm sorry, I have so many screens open in front of me, and getting a little thrown off on what I am sharing, essentially. Okay, I will share the mixed use district. Is everyone seeing the mixed use district right now, or?
Yes.
Are you seeing the light pink?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so that is essentially the mixed use district. It is not a contiguous district, because the design features of the mixed use are applicable to various parcels and was designed based upon their location and the developmental challenges those parcels face. So, they extend all the way up at the corner where you see Cedar Brook and the parcel below Cedar Brook. It also includes the Overbrook. It skips over the OPC parcel, and then you also have it on, at the corner of East University, Second, and on the west side of Elizabeth, and you also have a little bit of it up on Main Street. So, the mix of uses in this district are envisioned as being two-family residential, residential units that are located above the first floor. So, a true residential, where you actually have commercial, two-mixed use, I meant, right? Where you actually have commercial storefronts down, and then you have residential uses on top. Smaller type of commercial establishment. This also allows for office uses that we typically do not encourage in the ground floor of our central business district. It also encourages uses such as health and fitness studios, yoga studios, those kind of uses. As a conditional land use, conditional land use is now the term that is going to replace special exception. Special exception is very confusing, because it often gets interchangeably used with special projects. So, we are going to call it conditional uses, which is what most zoning ordinances call it, because it's a use approved with conditions. So, we do allow a few uses under the conditional uses umbrella in this. And then, there are a series of design details, and the design details specifically discuss building height. And building height is the reason why this district is so disjointed and located in various parts of the city, because depending upon which portion of the city it is located in, the allowable building height is different. For instance, the parcels that are on Lettika actually have a steep grade chain going down towards Clinton River. There is a dramatic change from Lettika down, when you, when you come down from Parkdale, down Lettika, all the way to Clinton River, there is a dramatic change in the grade, and the regulations takes that into advantage so that the building, the height the building is built to transitions without abruptly falling off. So, you don't want, because of the grade, a two-story building next to a five-story building, which really changes the, which looks unusual and is not exactly creating a flow of building design in the area. So, if you see the details for this district, the building height is discussed in detail depending upon where exactly the mixed use parcel is located. So, this is the next district. If the commissioners have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I also want to point out, Commissioner Hauser, that there is somebody on Zoom with a raised hand. So, whenever you're ready, I will ask that person to unmute and speak up.
So, I guess before we go to public comment on the questions, are there any comments or questions from the commissioners to Vidya or Mr. Banda? Okay, all right, so to the extent that there's a caller online, why don't we see if we can connect him or her?
Okay, give me one minute.
Sure.
Would the person with the last three digits ending in 651, please?
Hello?
Okay, go ahead, please.
Hi, this is Jane Turner. I'm Parkdale.
Good evening, Ms. Turner. Go right ahead.
Sorry, I didn't get in fast enough to get the public hearing thing.
It's okay.
But I have questions about the master plan period. I understand the state wants us to revive this every five years. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and this is our five years, and we're revising it.
That is correct.
Commissioner Hauser?
Yes.
I just wanted to provide, Ms. Turner, a clarification. This is not the five-year revisit of the master plan. The five-year revisit is over.
We did that.
The city has already adopted a new master plan. We are adopting districts, because once the master plan is adopted, you must implement it in your zoning ordinance, and we are implementing the master plan. The master plan is already in place.
Right. Ms. Turner, did you understand that? So, we had gone through this exercise several months ago where we adopted and modified the master plan, and now this is the second component of that, where we're getting the districts into that approved master plan.
Okay. I would like to know who starts these new things, and why are we updating it? Why is the update being pursued as such as you have presented it?
Well, I can try and answer that, but, Mr. Banda, I'll ask you to supplement if I get it incorrect. So, I believe the process is initiated by the city automatically every five years or so, okay? I believe it's by statute, correct? So, by statute, the city has to update its master plan. That is kind of self- affecting where we go into the process. And then, after that, as part of the review, I believe that there's areas that we may think that we can improve on, that may need changes, and that's what this process is currently. However, Mr. Banda, if I've misstated something or said something incorrectly, please clarify.
You've got it right. And then, we had a series of public hearings on all these events. It took about a year to go through it, and then, as Vidya said, now it's time to implement the master plan document into a zoning ordinance classifications with details, a schedule of regulations, so that we can then easily communicate with anybody that looks at our zoning map and understand exactly what the districts say and what they mean in the schedule of regulations, which has height, lot, lot of coverage densities, things like that.
Okay, but who starts it?
The planning, technically, the Planning Commission.
Which businessmen in Rochester want to start this?
I don't think that's the issue, Ms. Turner. The commencement of the master plan review is statutory, so the city directs the Planning Commission to commence the review of the master plan. The Planning Commission reviews it, and then, once they are in consensus, it then goes to City Council for their review as well. There's no businessman or businesswoman who initiates the process. This is statutory, and it's initiated by the city to the Planning Commission. Did I say that correctly, Mr. Banda?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, but then we go back to why. Why are these zones being changed? And there has to be some money behind it.
Okay. All right, so, Mr. Banda, if you'd like to.
So, the answer is, no, there's not. Any other questions?
No, there's not what?
There's no money behind it. Why would we, are you insinuating something, Ms. Turner?
Oh, you don't think tax dollars are involved?
No, that's not how I took your question. I took your question like somebody's trying to make some money on this. This is.
Oh, I think there's somebody in the city of Rochester that's trying to change things to their benefit, and the city.
I appreciate everybody can have their opinion.
Practically approves everything they wanna do.
It takes a rezoning request in order to, and a site plan request, or a special exception request, or a special project request that goes through a diligent process through the Planning Commission and City Council, ultimately, if it's a special exception or a, if it's a special project. So, there's checks and balances. People have to follow the rules. This simply lays the rules out so everybody knows what they are, Ms. Turner, going into the process.
Okay, who's in charge of the checks and balances?
The city and the Planning Commission, and ultimately, City Council in many cases.
Any other questions?
But if there's a, if there's something not balanced, who checks that?
Well, the checks and balances come from the representatives on the City Council. The checks and balances come from the people on the Planning Commission. The checks and balances also come from administration. So, there's probably no less than 25 individuals who independently look at the information that's been presented to us. There's been several meetings. There's been open to the public every single one of those meetings. Nothing is done under the cover of darkness. Nothing is done behind a closed door.
Oh, I know, I know. I listen as much as I can.
Okay, so if you listen as much as you.
But I still think that there's something behind.
Okay, well.
I've lived here since 1954. I've seen this city change for the good and the bad, and I think we're on the downwards slope of bad.
Well, and you're certainly entitled to that opinion, but I can represent you on behalf of the Planning Commission. Everyone takes us very seriously. There is no undue influence. There is no backdoor deals. Everything is on the up and up, and to the extent that you think otherwise, I can't really change your view other than to tell you I disagree with it. So, any other questions, Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
With all these changes in here, what improvements to Mill Street are you planning on?
I don't know if we've gotten to any improvements on Mill Street, and I'm being very serious. I don't know if that's even a subject for discussion this evening. Mr. Banda, are you aware of any improvements to Mill?
No, we have not had anything official come in for Mill Street at this point.
Well, does anybody there think that there needs to be improvement on Mill Street? With all of the extra apartment buildings that you've already approved, no one there drives down Mill Street and sees how bad it is? And how much of those condos decreased in value that are on Mill Street?
Increase in, increase in value?
Did you say decrease or increase, Ms. Turner?
Decrease.
No, they are now going for $400,000. When they were first sold, they were going for $180,000. So you have that backwards.
Okay. You have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
I'm not happy with what's going on in this city. But I've expressed my opinion. You take it as it is.
Absolutely. And I thank you for calling. Seriously, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. Have a good evening. Okay. Any other callers on the line? Vidya?
No, Chairman Hauser. There's nobody else on the...
Okay. So with that... Yes, go ahead.
Yes. So we move on to the last of the three districts for tonight, and I'm going to share my screen. Please let me know if you're seeing something in bright pink. Are you seeing the bright pink?
Yes, we are.
Okay. So this is the last of the three districts in this grouping, and this is called the mixed-use one district. And this is a very interesting district because it kind of balances out on one side, the downtown edge, it butts up to the downtown edge two on the west side, and then on the east side, it touches the mixed-use, the previous district that you saw. So mixed-use one is the intermediate district in the middle, and this extends all the way from university, including the parcel that we have been talking about being split by the Pika Line in the middle, including that parcel, and all of the parcels below it all the way to East Third. And then you also have all of the Suave-owned parcels. I'm not sure if Suave still owns it, but all of that falls into the mixed-use one district category. Once again, like the regular mixed-use itself, the mixed-use one is similarly designed in its use profile. The big difference about mixed-use one is the district's building height is not the same as what we are offering for mixed-use. In case of mixed-use district, it was a non-contiguous district, so we had multiple different building heights based upon where the district parcels were located. But in case of mixed-use one, since these borders are downtown on that side and there is still a height difference, this is one of the most important districts where the height will be regulated by the skyline test. Skyline test was something that was discussed extensively when we first wrote this. Basically, any developer who wants to build on any one of these parcels and comes before the planning commission requesting site plan approval, the minimum building height is three feet because some of the buildings are already taller and based upon the grade change, if you don't have the minimum building height as three feet, you will be looking on top of rooftop mechanical units. That will be the view from one building to the next. So if a building wants to go between that, between three and five stories, if a building wants to exceed the five stories, they will have to provide something called a skyline test. Skyline test basically demonstrates, demonstrates the line of sight diagram so that if you're standing on Main Street downtown and looking to your east, you should not be able to see any of the buildings that are built on any of these parcels. So it ensures that although these parcels will be developed with possibly taller buildings, it will not compromise the integrity of the core downtown itself. There will be no buildings on either sides of downtown that will be taller and detract from buildings that are in your core downtown itself. Once again, we have architectural design standards. We refer to other existing standards in there, and we also have setbacks proposed and lot coverage based upon the development potential of these individual parcels. As I mentioned, it's not very different from, in its use profile from the previous mixed-use district you reviewed. The main difference is in the building heights based upon the topography of where these parcels are. And this is one of the area where most of our recent development projects and proposals are coming forward. Nick, is there anything you would like to add about this district? Because we have had proposals come for this area and some went through and then did not materialize, but there is a lot of interest in parcels in these districts, in this particular district. So we want to make sure our regulations are robust and able to regulate the design of the buildings that come in this particular corridor.
If I may, Mr. German.
Of course.
Vidya, I think you outlined it perfectly. This is the most active district, probably because it's got the greatest redevelopment opportunities, either buildings that are ready to go. Example, the elevator facility, people have seen that's closed and been cleaned up now. That will come to you in June. We talked to Mr. Suave. I talked to Mr. Suave, who still does own the property, the 13.25 acres south of Second Street, and he doesn't have any specific plans. Mr. Mosheri, I talked to him. And again, they're pivoting based on the fact that, I think we talked about this at our joint meeting, that they were approved for a six-story, high, high-end apartment complex at Elizabeth and Second Street and Third Street, where they all come together there on the corner, right there. Yep. So all that area between this district and the adjacent district is ripe for development. So we want to make sure we get this right. And I think the good news is the skyline test really works here. So nobody's going to be able to overpower the downtown on the edge because of that. That's probably the best tool we put in so that we can monitor that's easily quantifiable with drawings. And we have topo and all that good stuff. So yeah, so it's, so this is an active, active district, and we're looking forward to seeing what comes out of it. The post office is in there too, but I don't think they're going anywhere. We're working on cleaning their parking lot up, but that's about it, so.
Ms. King?
Let me ask a question. Vidya, when I look at the larger proposed zoning map, I see mixed-use one, which is the, this bright pink, but I don't see mixed-use.
Thank you for pointing out that, Commissioner King. In fact, I was just talking to John Jackson about 10 minutes before the meeting, and I asked him the same thing. So I wanted to clarify to you that the larger zoning map, I'm going to put it up on the screen right now, it is a work in progress. That is why you see, we have been trying to match the future land use plan with our zoning map. It is individual parcel by parcel. We want to make sure there are no errors and we don't pick up a larger parcel. So the mixed-use needs to be fixed in this area. These parcels are actually mixed-use. But this is, if you look at the pink previously, all this is mixed-use one. This is actually the mixed-use district. This is one of the mixed-use parcels. So this map is a work in progress. That's why I didn't put it up initially on the screen. I put it up only to show you the downtown core, Edge One and Edge Two. But hopefully, by the time it comes before you for the public hearing at your next meeting, I'll have all that cleaned up by our map folks, and it'll be clean and they'll have the proper legend next to it.
Okay. I think that would be helpful just so we can see what is next to each area.
Absolutely.
Because it's hard to...
It's very confusing.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I will make sure that the map is cleaned up and it's clarified, and all of the districts you have discussed so far are cleanly delineated. We are still working with the map folks. It's a little slow because we are trying to make sure we don't, we get it right when we pick all the parcels.
The only saving grace is presently, all the old zoning classifications matter until we get this done. So nobody's got confused until we start opening up the future land use plan, the master plan, then you can see the maps, don't you? So we're getting them fixed.
Mr. Gasson, do you have a question about the website?
Yeah. If this information's on the website and it's not accurate and in progress, we should state that so someone's not confused.
So this, these are not on the, on the website.
Okay.
So.
All right. So they're not open for interpretation yet? Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No, these are purely for discussion at our meeting only. So what's published for the public hearing will be the accurate map, and I'll make sure.
Okay. Any, Ms. King? No?
No.
Okay. Absent any further discussion, I think the next would be a motion to set this up for a public hearing at the next planning commission meeting.
The second meeting.
The second meeting in May.
Thank you.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay. Support?
Support.
From Mr. Gasson. Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hauser?
Yes.
Bixson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Gasson?
Yes.
Kenjuk?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
And Stone?
Yes.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. All right. Yes, we're moving on to number seven, miscellaneous. Mr. Banda?
A few things here. So on next Monday, you're going to see Moon River. So company unfortunately couldn't save the building, so that will be demolished. They have a cash buyer that we have not met face to face yet. That's what they say they do. And everybody that's called, including supposedly who the cash buyer is, is a mixed-use development. So it would be retailer or office on the first floor. They could have either, and then two floors of residential above it. So that's number one. We expect plans in for the elevator. We actually, Vidya's got a rough draft of those plans. They officially won't submit until June so that the city council finishes the process of the second reading to amend the special projects boundary, which then we will do at that time. That will give you the ability to fix that Scribner's error on the elevator property. We've, again, we've met with folks on diversion, Joe Churko. So he's got a couple of projects that he's looking at down there. Again, update of Ludlow, no news at all on Ludlow and Solar Onyx at this point. Vidya's got a copy of, the Eagles are going to come in and do a permanent outdoor dining, seasonal outdoor dining. During the pandemic, we allowed them to do something, but it was a little bit wonky, and they are ready to invest and put up the proper fencing like we do on Main Street and have permanent seasonal outdoor dining. The platforms, city council approved again the use of the 13 parking spaces, and the DDA will reimburse the parking fund for the use of those spaces over the summer, and they'll go in next week. So we'll have those in May 1st. All the restaurants can put their fencing back up. So they work their way through me and the state on that one. They get their permits. Let's see what else. Dakatala, we, after the meeting, that was that, was that with city council or was that here?
City council.
That was city council. So he's working on the deck structure. They're there all weekend, patching and getting it ready to go. So we're, there will be an upgrade of that facility, and we're thankful for him for that. He's leasing out the apartments, which is great. No news on Tide yet. They're still for sale for lease. Don't, there's still some clothes in there, but most of the people were able to get their clothes out. See what else. Vidya, did we send you anything else lately?
Was Doc able to look at the pictures?
Yes. Okay. So yes. And, oh, and yeah, we're just obviously continuing. The DDA had their meeting last night, mayor, and they got the first glimpse of the Towns Center project that will come to city council Monday night. And it's, again, it's general presentation so they can see the concept of it, and they're grinding through all the details of the engineering and the cost and can we afford it? We did hear that we are put on a shortlist from Representative John James for federal funding for a grant of up to $1 million to help with that project. We met with Representative Tisdale, had a great meeting at the community house. He is championing a grant opportunity for possibly, I mean, we're going to ask for two and a half million dollars to redo the community house. So he got a great presentation. On Monday, we spent a couple hours with him, and he's going to apply for that, a different set of dollars, if you will. There's big money. There's $60 million available, 60, you know, $60 million available through grants for things like that. So they're going a couple of different districts, different directions. Trying to get a grant through Makaka, which is for the kitchen and stuff like that. That's a $250,000 kitchen upgrade. So we're doing everything we can as a city to try to use outside sources. That's how we're going to build the Allabilities Park. We got a total of $1.2 million for that. And then we were able to use our CDBG monies that we get every year to get all the ADA compliant paths. So we're going to be able to go from the top of the community house parking lot now and with ADA compliance through a series of switchbacks to get to the Allabilities Park, which is exciting because right now it's not, it's not good. You can't get there with, if you have any kind of disadvantage. So we're excited about all that good stuff. So we're going to have a dedication of the Sugar Maple Garden. We'll invite everybody to that, the Sugar Maple Grove in the spring. Mayor, you want to talk about State of the City?
Yeah, State of the City, May 10th. Of course, everybody on this board is invited to attend. Should be exciting, but as I said the other night, last night, if you've been to the ones in Rochester Hills, I will not be coming in from the ceilings or doing all kinds of interesting things.
You won't dress like Elvis or anything?
It'll be, yeah. It will be, and there's, there's some exciting things to talk about. So I hope you guys can all come.
Yep. And then you want to talk about Memorial Day Parade?
Yes, so the memorial, thank you. So we're having the Memorial Day that we've traditionally had at our cemetery. We're going to have it at 8:00 AM, which I think was typically at 9:00. Then the one in Rochester Hills is 9:00. And then the, we all meet at, the one, two, in Oakland Township is at 10:30.
Long walk right between.
It's a long walk. It's from Adams High School basically up to Silver Bell where the memorial thing is. And last, last year, I'm not kidding, it was 97 degrees.
And it's uphill.
And it was a long walk.
And it's uphill.
Yeah. We were dressed to look like something, not dressed for...
97 degrees.
97 degree weather, yes. So, yeah, May 10th, and then the 25th is the Chiefs. The Chiefs, yeah, you're all welcome sitting down. The Chief Shatnham is the 25th, is his going away party, if anybody's interested, and you know, the chief's done a lot of service for the city, so.
There's an opportunity in the next couple of days. If you, you should look in your email or on the website. We use this room set up at the studio, and you can come in and videotape a goodbye or a skit or a roast if you'd like, and then we're going to play that at the event. So that'll be kind of fun for him, a good memory for him. And again, the proceeds, $20 of the 25, 23 of the 25, go to the foundation, which is to create scholarships for kids that would like to go from Rochester schools to some kind of law enforcement degree and further in learning. So that's pretty, and should be an endowment that lasts for quite a long time. So we're getting a good shot at it. There's great rope turnout so far. It's going to be at the Roxy, which will be one of their first events that they have. So if you saw there, it's been painted now. They're feverishly working on the inside. It's going great. The corner bar is doing their renovation. They got some of the pillars down now, and they'll now finish the outside segment of that. So things are, things are hopping. We'll, we'll leave it at that. So we're, staff met, proud of this. We had, my schedule's a little crazy these days, so during the day, it's hard to find like 20 minutes in a row. So staff, at the staff meeting, said, I had planned on doing a, Vidya, you ought to love this, which should, made you drag out here. Got all the maps of the city, and I just spent, unfortunately, probably two hours going over every single thing that's going on, from every home, every street, every curb, every sewer lining, all the projects, things that we expect to come in and put it all on a big map, and we all talked about it. And then, like, for instance, Rewald is going to build that second building on their site, that gravel parking lot. That might be in here, that should be in here by June. So again, that has a lot of implications with that and how it interacts with the Town Square project and how the streets should flow, and do we need a roundabout, do we need a light at Elizabeth? So we spent, staff said, 5:00. We'll do it from 5:00 till whenever we have to stay here. So last Tuesday, was that, I think? Wednesday night. Wednesday night, we, staff came in, we got some pizzas, and we sat there for like three hours, and it was pretty cool. It was, it's team building, number one, but more importantly, you get all those brains in a room, and we came up with some really constructive things that I hadn't thought of, and I think, and we'll work that with Vidia, always make sure that she's part of all of this, so it's, it all kind of came together, so we're, it's fun, and we're, we're pretty energetic right now, and it's a good place to be.
One quick question, then we'll wrap it up. Any word on those brownstones on Main Street?
So I've had, actually this morning, another person, so I'm going to say, I don't think anybody's closed the deal. We heard that Dillman and Upton was going to buy out the project. Somebody literally called me today and thought it was still on the market, so it won't be long if it's not. They might have had a, maybe they're doing their paperwork on it, but I suspect within two months that will be back under construction at the latest. So if not, remember we have that bond.
We do.
And I hope we don't have to use that.
Okay.
Just one quick thing.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. King.
You mentioned Community House about the grants. I know they came and we approved some initial plans. Are they moving forward with those in the meantime?
Thank you. You know what, thank you for bringing that up. So this morning, yesterday morning, what day is today?
Days, Thursday, Thursday.
Okay, Wednesday morning, I met with Alan Smith, and the answer is no. So I came in at way, $3 million, and we had planned on hope around 1.2 million was the goal, which, and we had money set aside in the bond proceeds that we were going to use for that. We had to spend the bond proceeds by October. When it came in at 3 million, we, there was nothing we could do. The city wasn't going to write a check for $3 million, but we encouraged Alan to go back, find some kind of engineering, design engineering, work, work as magic, see what we could do. In the meantime, we took that money and milled and filled streets all over town, so that money was extinguished. So we went back through, they value engineered the whole thing, still came back with about $2.5 million, it looks like, so nothing is going to take place until they have the funding in place, either through a grant or fundraising. So having said that, Alan said, I, they assumed last year, they book a year in advance, weddings and parties, that they would have been under construction at this point, it should have been right now. So he's going to come back next month and, yeah, May, next Monday, a couple Mondays, and ask for a year extension on that tent. They, they followed what they were supposed to do, they took the tent down, they didn't rip the pad out in the winter, left the pad, and he's going to ask if he could have one more year temporary use of the tent. My suggestion to him was make sure you talk to Amy next door who was affected by it, and then the folks on the periphery, which he's already done, and they don't seem to have an objection. So we won't object to it, but I, I was frank with him, and I said, a lot of businesses would like to put up temporary structures to make more money, but at, and we don't let them do that, right? So even St. John's, they had to come back and commit to a certain date that they're going to take down those trailers, which they, I think they're gone as a fact, matter of fact, so they're starting their construction job, so it's up to you all if you want to agree to a one more year extension. I believe he said he'd take it down at the end of July. He had things booked in advance, so they would put it up and then take it back down, so that will be up to this commission to make that decision Monday.
Has the, has, have there been any complaints about the tent?
I will say zero. So he kept his promise of no noise problems, they shut it down properly. I talked to Amy next door, no issue, so they did, they did their part of it. I don't want to see a tent there forever, I mean, that's, either build a building or don't build it, but this is a little bit of extenuating circumstances that he thought, and we all thought, we'd be under construction by now, so that did, he booked some events, if you will, so mostly for nonprofits, to be honest with you, so, so we can have, he'll be here and discuss it and ask for your consideration.
Okay. Mr. Kinsley, any other questions? Mr. Gasson?
I do have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Kinsley.
So the 25th was noted for the Chiefs event, is that April or May?
May.
May. Sorry, thank you.
That's all right. One more question, how many staff does the city have?
Altogether.
Yeah, or maybe is there a breakdown that makes sense?
Um, so I think we have 78 total, a lot of those in the police department, there's probably 16, I think, 13, plus part-timers and DPW, the bulks in between fire and police. City Hall, I think we have 13, so we're pretty, we're pretty light.
Thanks.
Questions, anyone else? Mr. Stone, go ahead.
What is the latest on the apartment project that came through a couple of years ago, multiple times at Division and First?
You guys are asking great questions. So I met with Mr. Randazzo and his team last Tuesday, this past Tuesday, with their whole brownfield team. So what happened was he, obviously the pandemic hit, prices went up, and he never wavered, said, I'm going to build this, but then they got their, went through and spent hundreds of thousands of dollars of engineering to get to Eagle. He got his Eagle permits, it's called a Lomar and a Clomar, so it's adjusting the floodplain lines, hardest thing to get. So he knew it would take him a year, so he got it. Got it all ready, it's like, okay, you ready to build? And then the environmental came back, and it was $1.79 million in bad stuff in the ground. Expected $450,000. So Tony, Randazzo had come in front of this board and City Council and said, thank you, I know it's dirty, but I'm going to do this without brownfield funding. So about eight months ago, Mayor, I think I called you, and Tony approached us and said, I mean, I have good deep pockets, but this, this is a deal breaker for me. So would the city entertain a brownfield like the normal process? So we talked to Mayor and Council, and they said we would entertain it, so that's going to come in front of the brownfield authority in about two, May, the first week of May.
No, we got moved, I think it's May 15th or 16th.
Yeah, you're on May 15th, yep. So May 15th, you'll come to the brownfield authority, explain why he needs to do that to incent him to do it. I told him, if it means touching a window or anything, you're coming back to this board. If you come back to this board, you're going to open up the can of worms of all the signs are going to go back on First Street. So if you're serious about this, I, I made it very clear to him, don't even waste our time. He had to pay an application fee to the brownfield authority, but I said, don't waste any of our time. If we, the City Council approves a brownfield plan, and then you don't pull the trigger, that's not good. It's either know you're going to do it, know your construction costs, your engineering costs, all of that before we even have the meeting. So he brought his team in, and we met, and they're comfortable with the exact building, the exact process and everything, and we'll see what happens with the brownfield authority. It's not a slam dunk by any means. City Council has to agree to a seven-year payback, and it's 1.7 million. So I'll tell you, the best story is Rewald came in, we took that chance on that Headquarters Building, it was a seven-year payback. So for seven years, yes, we gather the counties and the state, education tax, and pay back him with his own taxes, and then after that seventh year, then you start putting money into the city coffers. That plan got completed, and we just closed it out in three and a half years. So we are now, the DDA was the benefactor of 129,000, err in their favor this year because that brownfield got closed four, three and a half years early, which was incredible. So we like that track record. Mosheri's probably going to ask for a brownfield on that site because it's still back into being dirty. The cleaner site and the collision shop's dirty, Solar Onyx dirty, no matter who does something there. So we don't have a lot of clean sites left. Suave's big property, Vidia was talking about, that's clean now, so that's good. Mosheri's elevator, the apartment site, that's cleaned already, so it's the other big ones that we'll have to make a decision if we want to be partners, because that's truly a partnership. If you give up your tax dollars, we do for X amount of years, what do we want to do? So we even, in my former, I did 17 of those, and we got really, really creative, and we just drove by one, a couple of weeks ago on Telegraph, the Lear Project, that was a $38 million cleanup.